Thank you for coming. I welcome all of you. As always, we serve the county counties that we all love and call home. As we like to welcome you here. As far as announcements, we have one thing, we have video on the agenda, anything else? So we have a great, hey, we have. We have a video that was sent to us by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Mike, I think if you have that to answer, we'll get this thing.
Hello, I'm First County Vice Chairman Ray Jeffries and President of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. I would like to invite you to join me in helping the NCACC represent the entities of all 100 counties. Our organization is only as strong as our members, and we need every county to be engaged. There are many ways we can get involved with our organization.
Thanks, President Jeffries. The NCACC has been advocating for counties for more than 100 years. And along the way, we have found that the best advocates for county government are you, our local elected officials. That's why we'd like to make it easy for you to help us achieve your goal in the General Assembly. Legislative Councilman Sam Skinner is going to tell you about how you can become involved.
One of the best ways county commissioners to get involved is serve on one of our seven steering committees. The steering committees provide guidance and recommendations to the board of directors in seven policy areas. Their agriculture, environment, general government, health and human services, justice and public safety, public education, and tax and finance. The committees meet quarterly and will consider information on emerging county-related issues. Each steering committee will be meeting in October, and I hope you will consider serving on its committee. You can sign up for a steering committee on our website.
The association does a lot more than advocate for county interests. Another part of our mission is to provide education and training for county commissioners and county staff. Associate Director of Education Jason Kooten is going to tell you more about an exciting opportunity we have coming up in October.
On October 15th, the NCACC will sponsor a seminar on implementation of the Affordable Care Act and its impacts on county government. This day-long seminar is free and will be held at the Sheraton Hotel in Orange County. We will bring policy experts from the National Association of Counties and other organizations to discuss with county officials the steps that counties need to be considering to make sure they are ready for this change. Elected officials can learn about the policy implications, and staff can learn about the details of implementing the Affordable Care Act. Counties will be impacted by the ACA in numerous ways, as employers, as providers of public health services, and as administrators of the state's Medicaid program. This seminar will help counties understand the issues that could come up as the ACA becomes law. I hope to see you in Orange County on October 15th. For more information about this seminar, please visit our website at the address on your screen.
Thanks, Jason. Another way that we provide services to counties is through our risk management pools. You might not know that the NCACC is the number-one provider of insurance for workers' compensation and liability of property for North Carolina's county governments. Amy Basin, our General Counsel, is here to explain.
The Risk Management Pool were created to help counties and county entities better manage the costs associated with liability and property insurance and workers' compensation insurance. The programs are specifically tailored to meet the unique needs of county governments. We also provide an extensive risk control service to help members reduce their costs by identifying and eliminating potential risks. If you would like to learn more about our pool, please visit the NCACC website and click on the Risk Management tab.
As you can see, the NCACC does a lot for our counties. I hope you will join me this year as we seek to make the NCACC an even more valuable partner for all 100 counties.
Okay, is that it, Mike?
Yes, sir.
That was from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. And for those who don't know, that's a gathering of counties across the state that advocates for counties and are very successful in locking the General Assembly to do things or not do things. It hurts counties, and I believe all 100 counties should remember that as a state. Okay, gentlemen, before we deliver announcements, let's stand in silence and focus on the Honors of the Horses and the President of the House. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, sovereign, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no public hearing tonight, and I think the sheriff, if anything, changes the public comment, we acknowledge what's on the public comment tonight, so we're just right through that. Adjustments to the agenda, gentlemen, number seven, anything that you would like to add or delete from the agenda. Commissioner Higgins, anything?
No, sir. There are four matters that I think we need to add to the campaign, please. One, we need to hear from Ms. Kimsey with regard to the impact of the federal government shutdown on DSS. And we also need to hear from Mr. Rutter on how that is affecting the Health Department. We need to talk with you a little bit about the county's responsibility for providing office space for our new Superior Court Judge. And then finally, if we have some time, we'd like to, we're in, I'd like to talk with you a little bit about trying to come to some agreement on the final payment of the budget of Bradshaw, which we discussed at the previous meeting.
Okay, gentlemen, be okay. Jane and Jim Rutter both have, I'm assuming, three reports that need to be reviewed. Let's go ahead and put him at the beginning and report some presentations. We'll do that, let him do that. And let's see, Mike, the third office space, that would be?
Yeah, that may be a new business.
New business, let's make that, that would be ten, H, correct? Is that right? Ten H. And the last thing would be a briefing on Bradshaw. I'm not sure, both of these things, whole business? So that'd be nine C. And I have a problem with that. Anybody have anything else to add or delete? I'll say, we say, opposed, motion passed. We'll move right in. Ms. Kimsey, do you got an agenda to read?
Thank you.
Quick.
Very quick. And I do have a, you know, I think she specifically tells us to call us and put the video. Since October 1st, we have been advised the various landowners' conference calls of what potentially is at risk for federal funding, as you know, a significant portion of our budget. We do provide all the federal mandates for the state, and over 50% of our budget is under 50%, 50% or so, or especially 50% of our budget is federalized. So we work on a reimbursement basis. We provide services, we claim that it's not falling, it's not a service, and we get our reimbursement because it's not falling. So you have too much to worry about. At this point in time, we have been advised by our Division Director that we will obviously any federal funding intended, our temporary assistance to new families with detailed for that impacts in the interim, our social services grant, our childcare development fund, and our low-income energy assistance program. So specifically, at this point, food, nutrition, and Medicaid benefits are not impacted, and administration for those are not impacted. Our workforce cash assistance, we can take applications, but we cannot process that. Our child support enforcement is not impacted at this time, and I qualify that just for the month of October, we do not know about November. We anticipate that this federal budget impact will be taken care of and not last long, because we do know the longer that lasts, the more it affects us. Foster care and adoption services, we have already funding, which is a federal funding, that says they are okay for October. Impacted areas are mandated areas of child protective services and adult protective services, which we would request that the county continue to fund those, the mandated, they have to be provided. So it would be just asking that you continue, and we do anticipate we would get that funding authorized retroactively, or I do have some 10 dollars that I have not budgeted currently in this budget that cover the most child protective services. Our workforce, the working class, the cash assistance, the way it is, has not been budgeted yet, so we look to use those dollars to make a decision. Guardianship funding is covered with carryover funding, search services for what grant, all of the aging services, senior services, home care, community block rate, the congregate meals, home delivered meals, adult aid, charity services are covered under the home care community block rate, and they're okay for October. They have carryover funding. Our childcare subsidy, we assign those dollars to Southwest Child Development, and they are monitoring the plan to decide whether or not we can continue to do while their funding to make sure that that continues. They anticipate it would be retroactive, so we think that's a good place for it to be authorized. And then our community energy assistance programs, they don't start until they become funded, but our classes are in ditching, and our low-income energy assistance does not start until this summer, so at this time, we don't know about those, but we're not, we're not wanting those, but it's very important to provide those at this point, if we want to. So again, my closing paragraph, as you can see, it says, the longer that lasts, the worse it can be. We've just been asked to come and advise the county, make sure they're aware of it, and ask them to continue to provide the mandated services of child protection, adult protection, with anticipation of those funded retroactively.
Anything to add?
Well, at risk is about $2,600 a day, and that includes all salaries, fringe, overhead, the entire programs that are at risk. So it's your salary, and the fringe, and then all the overhead, so all the supervisor fund, everything in the space. We have an indirect cost plan that benefits the county too, about $500,000, and that's also a cost allocated to those positions. Everything is still involved.
So we understand this, how fully grasp this government shutdown. So they, these are things that we're mandated to provide, but at this point, the federal government is not providing money for it.
We've got, that's clear.
And at some point, you anticipate when they do, whatever they do, that that money will be released.
For the mandated services, yes, for mandated services.
Do you know how long you can go then with what you've done?
With what I've done in our budget? Let's see, Karen, the dollars that we had a budget in here are getting out, but we do anticipate those will come through.
Thank you, Karen. You don't have a town of funds, did you have a town of funds?
The 10 dollars are what we have not budgeted yet, we can't say, because they're federalized, so they're not available to us right now. We would have several scenarios and plans to come back to you to try and make those dollars out if it's not funded retroactively to October 1st. But I guess to reassure you, you do provide our services in advance, so everything is new and fresh and all. The only thing that, right now, that we're being told we can't draw down on those funding sources that I have filled in is detailed, and that's, that's kind of just over the debt. And that does what, include the childcare subsidy, that's always a statement.
If this cycle goes on for another week, then they, well, how long before do you have to send this off?
Well, and that's where it gets very difficult, because we provide mandated services. I can't send mandated. I've got to provide adult protective service and child protective services.
So those funds, you're not?
I may, yes, someone has to provide that service. Then we come back to you with a plan of how to provide that service, but you have to be trained and certified to provide those two, so you can't just use anybody and we do it for them.
And on the energy assistance, which is so important to our area, what I heard Friday was that, nobody, there's no other, there's no other source of money unless it's local office.
For the energy assistance.
For the energy assistance, there's no, the state was, going, they had an idea one time, was setting aside somebody, then they sent them to the media.
Well, and they were still trying to determine if they had any carryover funds where they drew sundown to counties that used it for cooling purposes, they were in.
Did you hear anything about that thing?
We did not hear it today, but we have, NCACC office called Thursday, we anticipate they'll give us some direction.
It's supposed to be, we just have, if they are somebody, we just want to make, and how they disperse, we want to have a saying of something to get our, to get our.
I think we need to have, I think a lot of games, you play Washington, and I don't understand that. But I don't think, I don't like that idea of mandates. I despise that, actually. So I think we've got no problem continuing the things we're doing, anticipating that they're going to fund these mandates, but if they don't, I think we have, we have an interesting plan to get back together and talk about this sooner or later.
And what I would ask is that we look at hearing at our social services board meetings next week, which will, as we all see, as our board, so we would devise Plan ABC, I've got several plans that I would like to start with them, and then we would bring it back.
If anybody stretches a dollar out of it.
And I've got a faith in you, so they, if the federal government continues to not fund these things, then they can revisit.
Commissioner.
And at that time, you probably give the, you know, I don't protect the services, that just, we didn't make the mess, but it always ends up federal over there. But on that call, sir, the only thing I'd ask is, I will be on the call, this is going to be a conflict for him, for me, providing, speaking for the rural counties and our counties if we keep being that. But Friday, they said that we had a good possibility that rural counties be involved, but our money in that pot. We'll stop for a second, we'll take this for a stop for a second. I mean, sort of, we need to take the action, or we just sort of contain it as we are, because it's a reverse. Okay, so no action, thank you.
And we will continue to do that, as we anticipate a letter today, because they've been hearing all day today, so we get to get one. We're trying to keep abreast of that, of what, anticipate, if I'm not mistaken, and that's difficult, I think Sheriff Rose, our Deputy Director today, told us about the health and human services.
They exchange it, so.
Yes, and they were mending with the legislature today, that they're trying to determine the quality of, and they're drawing, and they have available some carryover that could be reimbursed, so we'll continue to be coy with it, just like we always were, and just hope that we get as little as possible until we budget. I wish it had been quicker and better than this.
It's okay. It is, buddy.
Thank you.
I'm going to tell you, it's same things pretty much achieved, I think, most of it. I'm just going to break mine up into two separate categories of services. One is mandated services that are core public health services that were required by general statute to provide, and only public health to provide. And the other section is what we call essential services, which are services that under general statute, required to ensure and provide, contract with somebody to provide, or provide service ourselves, or assure it's available in the community. The areas that are impacted for us are our Community Disease Program, which is funded by the CDC, maternal health program, which is our prenatal program, that's funded through the maternal child health block grant, family planning, which is also funded through the maternal child health block grant, child health program, which is funded through that same maternal child health block grant, our public health preparedness program, our WIC program, which is the WICs and Children's, so we have an inclusion program, which is funded by the Department of Agriculture. We did get word late this afternoon that there's funding at the state level to carry that program through the end of the month, but only to carry staff, and we put news out today, a statement, news out today, and you read it, and media, that affected today, we are issuing one more new voucher sheet. We're going to have to put everybody on a waiting list for WIC until the end of the month, or until this is lifted. Our Breast D and Peer Counselor, which is also funded through USDA, which are all the ones that we require as public health to provide. The services that are impacted, that we consider essential services, that according to the law, were to ensure are available in the community are Breast and Servant Cancer Control Program, which is funded by the CDC, our Wise and Cardiovascular Disease Program, which is funded by the CDC, our Healthy Communities Funding, which is our Department of Health grant funds, and then block grant funds, and then Community Transformation Grant, which is a program funded by the CDC. And I'm going to say the same thing Jane said, in fact, my card read exactly like hers to you, I played your script, she had. I'll admit that, as long as the shutdown, the longer it lasts, the more money it's going to cost, and we are hoping to receive some state funds that they have, that are carried forward money, just like Jane said, but there's no guarantee for any of that, it's got to be approved first. So we've got much to give them both, and yes.
Do you rank those that were reported, the ones mandated, that you got, that we can see a list, you want to say ranked from one to the end, this is what is most needed, or serves the most people, or this is all about the same?
It's all about the same, and all of them required by law for us to provide, and we have no choice but to provide the services. Again, if the government don't fund a mandate, and we do have, we actually sat down almost four years ago for health, and created higher, we have programs that we had to eliminate based on funding that we would eliminate. We already have plans to work, same as Jane, for meeting with our board, but ours is supposed to be in the month, and we may have to call with you and the board, the Chair of So Desires, have a conversation before that, but we are going to provide several different options that the board can choose from, that we will have to probably bring back to you by the end of the month. To answer the question real quick that Jane answered a few minutes ago, it's about $2,096 a day starting in early October for us, and is what we're lasting, or what we're generating in charges, that there's no federal money to cover. We have nothing left salary to cover up through today, so after today, anything we do, we'll see that cost back and hopefully just reimburse when, if they do reinstate those grants. And if you have any specific questions about cost of programs, or any other, we've got more money provision, I just didn't get to go in here all of that this evening.
I'll just say this publicly, I, the disruption in Washington continues to remain, regardless of period or politically, the impact of my vision for the Affordable Care Act that I asked, and I'm just saying this, that, you know, the church wasn't ready for it, and this federal change system doesn't work, and they can't get here in three years.
Well, North Carolina fast has been going for how many years, Jane?
Seven.
And they said, all they do is make a phone call, and it is COVID, you know, phone call. Yours is one of, out of 100 counties, we got 19.
And if the federal government stayed out of the health insurance, if it don't, I had, had that already solved, but you know, that's, then it's, I may have to realize, I'm realizing.
There you are.
Forty people open up. Anyway, thank you for your report, we appreciate that, and we recognize the disruption in Washington, and we hope that we solve it some point. Thank you.
I've got a question, my last question before we further on this topic. I realize that we're an army in the state, and I'm funded mandates, it's like we have to, in lobbying, they say, we will take something, we have to take one, we don't have a choice. That's something we have to stand on, but does this exactly stand the same way with the state, the government?
I think it is in this situation, since these programs are sort of passed down from the federal to the state, and the state is in local, if you will, and so, at the risk of public certification, I think we're stuck with all those things that are mandated by statute, or by rule, or by regulation. But I think in the long term, if, you know, situations aren't worked out, I think we can't have.
Well, there are political solutions, sure.
You know, we're not going, they're not going, there's a jail, we don't fund something, or, well, we're funded, so.
I guess, point is, basically, I've got a camp on this right here, you take the DP with a basketball, with DP and a basketball, they're dry. All they got is a press cut and wardrobe, what are we doing, what are we doing, when they got all the funds out of town? Have we been paying taxes for that way we should have?
Well, you know, I don't, I hate to even address that, and hope that it never comes to pass, but obviously, should that come to pass, you know, those are the types of things that require leaders, local, state, and federal levels to start making some really tough decisions. We have a, Anne, is it Andrea? Anne Andrea, is that right? Did I say that right? Okay. We recognize you, we're going to recognize middle-term awareness week, so Anne, welcome.
Do you have the confirmation I'm looking for to read, or do you?
You do.
Okay. Whereas serious mental illness, such as major depression, bipolar disorder, schizophrenia, obsessive compulsive disorder, severe anxiety disorder, borderline personality disorder, and post-traumatic stress disorders affecting one in every four people annually, whereas serious mental illness are more common in cancer, diabetes, and heart disease, and are the number one reason for hospital admissions nationwide, whereas serious mental illness has been scientifically proven to be a highly treatable illness of the brain, whereas scientific research has produced tremendous breakthroughs, and the understanding of mental illness resulting in one or more effective treatments that allow people to reclaim full and productive lives, and whereas misunderstanding exit, exists about mental illness and our social culture often wrong. often wrongly imposes a stigma on them, now therefore resolve that I, Kevin, for the Chairman of the Mayfair County Board of Commissioners, who hereby proclaim, October 7th through October 13th, 2013, as mental illness awareness with the Mayfair County, to increase public awareness of mental health. And I would make the motion that we approve that proclamation, Mr. Chairman.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second, and discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. As is if you are, I'll sign this, and you miss to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to, I'd like to take just a moment also to recognize Commissioner Beal, if I might. He has just been awarded the NAMI North Carolina State Award, that comes with John Baggett Award. And this is given, recognizes a local community efforts of a non-member on behalf of people living with mental illness. The nomination for him reads as this, as here, NAMI Appalachian South is proud to nominate Ronnie Beal, Mayfair County Commissioner for the John Baggett Award. Mr. Beal established the Mayfair County Mental Health Task Force five years ago. This task force is unique in North Carolina and has brought together a group consisting of representatives for many county departments, plus providers, law enforcement, Department of Justice, schools, and others to address services to individuals and families dealing with mental illness. This team continues to meet regularly to identify problems and work towards solution. He has helped establish a crisis team, services in our jail, and supported CIT training at the local level, and has advocated for additional beds and increased funding on the state level. He has supported our local NAMI affiliate with his personal gifts and helped obtain space for our meetings and classes. He has complimented our affiliate by saying publicly, "NAMI Appalachian South accomplished amazing things on his shoestring." Ronnie has been Mayfair County's representative to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, NCACC, where he has served as Chair of the Human Services Steering Committee. The president of NCACC recently said, "He helped educate state leaders about the impact of county cuts in mental health funding." Mr. Beal was recently elected to this by his peers to serve as president of that organization this next year. In that position, he will be representing 100 counties. Some NAMI leaders and members remember his presentation at our 2011 Western Conference in Asheville, where he ended with his redneck PowerPoint. If you haven't seen that, you should see it. This was a cardboard handmade poster that said, "John Doe, who has recently been diagnosed with a mental illness, will be the benefit of a, at a well-known church." And he stated, Ronnie stated that until he could see the sort of move where mental illness is recognized and supported by the community, he would not stop working for us. So simply said, when it comes to the impact of mental illness on individuals and families.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I appreciate you so much. Thanks, Anne.
And I would say, this Friday, we had a great meeting in Raleigh. NAMI was so nice, had a big crowd, all from Franklin, Missouri, and we talked about our meeting with the HHS, but if you don't know, if you don't realize what NAMI is, this is not a club, this is not a little social gathering with people who really work, and the sheriffs will testify to that more than anybody here. And I think Mike can testify to that, he's sitting somewhere in the place, so. So I appreciate and I thanks for the recognition, the award, the deserved people, and I appreciate this courtship, too. Thank you, appreciate the people that you do today.
Very warm area. Ms. Ramsey, I think you're here. Sid, Margaret Ramsey, I believe it's Teresa Ramsey, is that right?
I'm the Ramsey representative tonight. Margaret apologizing for not being able to be here, but you know, she has.
You may not know.
I will tell her that you need to. First off, thank you for allowing us to be on the agenda tonight. I do believe the proclamation for pancreatic cancer, Ramsey, that we have.
We do, we do have that. And are you going, I would, except for how much, but it's probably the whole thing.
Sure, that's fine, whatever you would like to do.
This, this basically, we're recognizing that 42,000 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States this year, that over 35,000 will die. Pancreatic cancer will affect 1,000 deaths in North Carolina this year, right?
In North Carolina.
And 76% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year, and goes home several of those patients. And I can say, I had several close friends, I had one very, very close friend talk to me about this, this land area, he's from Western North Carolina, he's 47 years old, found out about it, and was dead in six weeks. Very deadly for him, very, probably good to recognize where it has been so far.
Like the fourth leading cause of cancer deaths of all the cancers, however, it's like 12 years under the age of, the reason for wanting the proclamation for November of the Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month, specifically November 15th, for Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day here in Mayfair County, is so that we can educate and just get people informed about pancreatic cancer and the need for screening that can help save people's lives. Because like you read, if you don't find out about it until it's too late, there is no strength.
And I think we need to say that Allie, well, the Ramsey daughter, is suffering from pancreatic cancer, and has made strides, unbelievable strides.
Diane Ramsey Forsyth.
And I think she had a test of the pancreas, removed and still.
Yes, she had the Whipple surgery, and right now, today, I can say, today Diane is cancer-free. And she is one of the very few pancreatic cancer sufferers. And we are hopeful that when she has her scan, end of this month, the results must still be the same, but right now she is cancer-free. That does not stop our need for promoting research for people.
To summarize, we've been asked as state of the month, November's Pancreatic Awareness Month, and November 15th is Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day in Mayfair County, in order to give them the ammunition, if you would, to vote this call, and now we're starting to have a motion to do that. A motion for a second, sorry, a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Please, we'll send this to you.
Thank you so much. And on November 15th, thank you. We appreciate the call. On November 15th, downtown at the gazebo, an event is scheduled, and we hope that it will come and be recognized somewhere across the country to eradicate and promote awareness of pancreatic cancer. Thank you so much.
And nobody was wrong, that last year, the later play from, so it's, well, you remember that.
Yes. And this year, our speakers.
That's a Friday.
It is a Friday. The band starts playing at 5:00, the program begins at 5:30, it will be brief. The coroner from Deasley, if you saw recently on Channel 4 News, whose brother suffered from pancreatic cancer, is going to be our guest today. So it should be entertaining and enlightening and hopefully informative to everybody. 15th of November, information will be sent on the paper, we just didn't want to jump the ship until after you guys officially, but.
Thank you. If you would, would you send us an email or send to me and I'll.
I will, definitely.
Every time, and before the measure system is.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. This, before, I guess, maybe Paul has, that rather than everyone coming asking for donations for different nonprofit groups, these kind of things, that kind of set up, I want to say 10 years ago, that's a guess, 12 years ago, set up a pool, and then we have a special committee, that Ms. Wallace is representing tonight, that comes and makes the recommendations of how to spur that money. The lady's already in the budget, she's not asking for additional funds, this lady that's already been allocated, this is just their recommendation of how to.
How to discuss. That's right. Very good description, I don't really have much else to add to that. We did receive 17 requests this year. The total requests that we received were for $114,588. We have $50,000 that's been allocated by the county commissioners to distribute to nonprofit organizations within Mayfair County that are serving the needs of Mayfair County residents. Our task force needs to review the applications, and I believe that you have those before you nail what our recommendations are. There were 12 organizations that we are choosing to recommend funding for, and those represent a variety of services that are provided through nonprofits, including health and human services, education with literacy, and some cultural services as well, for quality of life for people in Mayfair County. So we've got 12 organizations, agencies, that we're recommending funding for. Only two are we recommending full funding of their total request, and that's been a pattern for the community funding that we have requests from Kids Place and from Reach that we fully fund because the value of their services is so important for the people in Mayfair County. The others, we use a formula that the task force has developed over the years to adjust the amounts that have been requested by the different agencies. The five agencies that we are not recommending, we just didn't think would make a significant impact for the citizens of Mayfair County. In the event that there would be additional funds, I think that you'll see on the recommendation that we provided, the 12 agencies that we are recommending funding for, with total $61,671. $50,000 is what we did use as our target amount for distribution. So in future, if you are able to secure any additional funds, then that 20,000 of that 50,000 goes to two entities. So we would ask for you to consider in the future possibly making an increase in that allocation that's available to us to issue to the nonprofits. Be happy to answer any questions.
I think, you know, any increase, I think we probably need to come, come through budget process and go through that fully allocated, because this will change that, maybe 10,000 or 15,000.
And we do take action based on the 50,000, Chris, it hurt to ask.
Mr. Chairman, I think something has to be said, that this committee, that Ms. Wallace has been, so they, not, never watched this committee work, but they take it very serious. Each one's talked about, nothing's been given, many of these applicants received right there.
Correct.
And, and it, that's a lot of pressure off this board, and it's like, it's a very good thing, and you folks take it very serious, and I appreciate it.
My first year as a county commissioner, a vision club, and asked me to sit in on the, and I can vouch for that, they do a super job, and I think, goes back to what I said about the federal government, just continues to prove the best expense of our tax revenue to look at.
So that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we recognize the entities that community funded, who has recognized the amount of 50,000 dollars, and you refer to those entities that are recommended.
Do we have a second motion? Good motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Thank you, Karen.
We thank you, we appreciate the time.
What you do, and that motion, that's, that's. Oh, we'd like to bring in Ms. Karen Wallace, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we're going to change hats now. I'm here on behalf of the Mayfair County Public Library to make a request for the board to consider a change that we want to make at the library. We recently received a donation to be given in memory of Virginia Ramsey Brunner. And this donation was made by her sister, Nancy Ramsey, to honor her sister, their natives of Mayfair County, and provide a memorial for Virginia Ramsey Brunner. We worked with the library board, we worked with our landscape architect, invited our original architect to come and take a look at the proposed memorial garden that would make really nice use of the grounds that are available at the library. Would create a sanctuary in a largely unused area of the library property, and would really benefit, I think, people of Mayfair County to take advantage of space that's already there. This memorial garden would not require, I'm not asking for any funding, we did receive a $10,000 donation to create this garden area. Our landscape architect has drawn up a plan, which I think was provided for you, the sketch of the garden, has some native plants, it has some seating areas, it does require some fencing to enclose for security purposes, to enclose the area because it will be accessible from the library. So we want to make sure that we protect the materials that are in the library, so we have set up some security for that in the plant. This will require some changes, we have talked with the fire marshal, we've got talked with building inspections, and we brought that before the library board with that sketch last week. And Mr. Beal is the liaison to the library board, and made the suggestion that we approach the board for approval to make those changes on the grounds of the library.
So, Mr. Chairman, as leaves on, we did have a long discussion about, I think, it's a great project, we appreciate it, and part of the donation enhanced the area. My question to the library board is, I'm going maintenance issue with this, and with the group we have at the library, is either fence the library and others, we don't perceive that to be a problem at all, Tom, it's a project. And we think it would be a great addition, I'm pretty okay. If you don't know exactly where that is come from, it was the library, that's an area that's not being used, or new ground should never be used out of plan for any expansion or waiting for it, right there.
The, the building was originally designed to, to be able to expand, and a portion of this property would include that expansion area, but we discussed that and feel that elements of the garden could be relocated to courtyard areas in the event of the eventual expansion of the library.
Would you help that?
I don't anticipate it's intense.
Sir, you, A, you're not asking for any money, and B, you're not asking to enter into a contract, so I don't know if we have to go down, probably.
Just to touch on county property, is, I think, we.
Right, and that, how many times have we had?
So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the design of the memorial garden that's laid out, and also that we ask our internal county manager to prepare a tribute to this Brunner on behalf of this board, and that this room was made in the name of her deceased loved, and I'll make that a motion, I still had it for you.
Good, motion, second, and discussion, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? That motion passes. Thank you, Karen.
Emily, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. And please extend our appreciation to you for that donation.
We certainly will.
Thank you. Under all business.
We see you.
Yep, Highway Safety Program, Sheriff Robert Hoffman.
Basically, you've received this memo, there is one correction, it said October 1st, 2030, it should have actually read October 1st, 2004, on the back before you sign a, is it resolution, what is it? Resolution for this program. First year, of course, is, as you remember, and I believe it passed unanimously, it was federal side was 85%, our county side was 15%, we paid 18,000, they paid 103,000. This year, it's 45,000 federal and 19,000 county. Basically, what this officer's responsibility is, his primary responsibility is traffic enforcement, trying to keep our roadway safe, safe. He's found 1,065 violations, written violations, and he's made 11 DWI arrests. He's held 43 checking stations, of course, the department combined held 80, and this is as of September 30th. I could go on and on with some stats, but to say, if I have any questions, I'll be happy to.
Well, I think, I think, Rob, I want to ask, is that with the shutdown, what does that do about the federal part of this line, do we know that?
We really don't know that we're 100% certain. Okay. 43. But anyway, we don't know that for sure. The only thing that we can, we can assume is that this is coming from the state, and I don't think that they would have allowed us to go into this resolution if they didn't already have the funding for the position. We would have been notified, because they're the ones that are saying, hey, you can get this done now.
Again, would we send anything different, I think, and we need to revisit that?
Oh, absolutely, we would. Oh, absolutely, we would have no choice. Absolutely. That's, that's a concern I had just 10 minutes ago, we had a discussion in class.
No, no, sir, no bad. Just, I'll read it, but.
Correct.
Yes. There is a form resolution, I think Mr. Wells passed. I believe that's last.
That's last, okay. We got, we want to do that thing.
But we didn't have one.
Now, do we, do we get that, all of it?
I think they do.
We get on this governor's highway safety program, I mean, I used to get to stand on you here, but which governor was there?
The former governor. If you don't mind, I'd like to ask my lieutenant to come up, who is the person that's.
Yeah, can you throw them all?
But he is the person that represents our agency with the governor's highway, so he could probably answer some of those questions as well.
Hey, how's this tie in with the highway patrol, with the state troopers?
Nothing to do with them whatsoever.
But is that, is there any conflict, or any?
No, no, nothing, we, we, not necessarily, our day-to-day lives, and it helps out the county too, whenever we're getting, you know, native complaints and such, we can actually take care of ourselves, and not first rely on the agency to take care of our complaints or fielding for our offices.
To do with traffic.
Correct. If you think about it, back just prior, before we even started with the governor's highway safety program, we were actually already doing some of this stuff as well. And it's, and one of the reasons for that is a lot of people do not call the highway patrol complaining about traffic, they end up calling sheriff complaining about traffic, or county commissioner, and then county commissioner calls the sheriff about the traffic. And I can refer them all day long to the highway patrol, but the reality of this, as the sheriff, I'm responsible for the safety of my community. As sheriff, I'm supposed to utilize every possible tool I have to keep my community safe. And if you don't have a trooper on duty after 11 o'clock tonight, you have deputies that are out there, and we can turn our backs on people that are out here. And so, being, in the governor's highway safety program, meeting the criteria that they set forth, the checking stations, or doing the things that they're asking us to do, it allows us to earn money back, to be able to fund position, fund equipment. We've gotten lots of equipment, I can't remember the number of thousands of dollars of equipment that we've gotten. We've had one of a million dollars, $30,000 that we've gotten in the last three years, four years.
Is that a result of citations?
That's a result of, well, not only citations, but proactive law enforcement, out here doing check with stations, letting the community know, we're out here watching, and if you want a drink, drive tonight, be prepared to get stopped by, by, by the sheriff. Since I've been in law enforcement, routinely, it was not, it was not uncommon for us to be driving down the road in a marked patrol car, and have people pass us, and it's because they know that we didn't have radars in the time. You never see anybody passing a marked patrol car now unless it's, unless it's unmarked, generally, and it's closed, it's closed to traffic now. And it also allows us to be able to retain position. I think it was five years ago that the commissioners agreed that we were lacking in manpower, and while the economy was going south real quick, they agreed that, well, we don't have the funding right now to give you positions that we all agree that you need, you need to start looking for brains. So, we started doing that. And I think it was, what year was the governor's highway safety?
2006.
Yep, we got a sense of government, just saying we'll continue the safety.
We have no idea what's gonna happen. All we know is whether we have the governor's highway safety program to be involved with and get some of this funding back or not, we're gonna, we're gonna continue.
Cause you're gonna be talking down, and doing a lot of, doing change.
I just, I just had a meeting two weeks ago, a little seminar over there in Hickory, and nothing is changing, nothing has changed. It was only in-house changes, like forms and such.
Are you saying they even discovered, to recognize something, or they were hit one way?
Yep. I'm sorry?
There's new cards.
Oh, yes, we have a brand new, fully equipped, $18,000, just around, and it's been there a little less than a year.
Yeah, we do about $20,000 to $23,000 a year for our.
Are you going to pay for the platform this year?
I'm not sure. They applied for equipment grant, and they, they attained it.
They did something, they did it yesterday.
Yeah, they did receive about $14,000 for decent equipment, for check stations.
So I guess, you and Nick, you'll apply.
The reality of it is, in my personal opinion, when, when we saw the governor's highway safety program come forth, we saw a lot of positions, highway patrol retiring and not getting filled. And my honest opinion is, is that the state was putting a responsibility, as in everything else, on the county. They weren't filling positions. If we had six troopers at one time, we may have gone down to four troopers, and they weren't replacing those positions. But we still had drunk drivers, we still had people driving too fast, and so it left us having to catch up, and to take up the slack that was being done. And no fault to troopers, I'm not, I'm not feeling like it was us here, but they weren't being replaced. And the other truth about it, they go home 11 o'clock at night. We out here 11 o'clock at night, just seeing plenty of traffic. And so we had to step up.
Have any units as, right, or have any units assigned to traffic control?
There's only one officer that's oriented for that, which is the ranking, the rest of officers, there were multiple hats, where they respond to the calls, and they have downtime to be able to work in the communities for, just for the safety and such. That's only on their downtime, but our call loads have really skyrocketed, and they have minimal time now.
Your call?
Our call caseload, that we receive and call from dispatch center, calls of service, it's.
Related to?
No, no, related to general policing, for break-ins and such, and domestics and drug trafficking, whatever is.
So that did take your workload.
Right, he says calls, you want me to give you an example of that? What is, what he's talking about, the number, when you say calls, what he's talking about is the officers that are on patrol right now, do you speak, through the 911 system? 2012, those officers received $13,337 calls. In addition to that, the police department received 8,500, Highlands Police received 2,800, we received 13,337. In addition to those calls, those are through the 911 system, they keep us on 911.
And of that total number, 13,000, does that include, I mean, is that specifically the sheriff?
Specifically, the police department, 8,500, the Highlands Police Department, 2,800, and the Macon County Sheriff's Office, 13,337. In addition to those 911 calls through, they would keep 911 centered. We had 13,740 individuals walk into the sheriff's office, and we had 16,391 additional non-emergency calls, where people, in addition to doing all that and answering those calls, and they're out on patrol, going out to Burnington, whether they're coming to your house because you called about a suspicion, they're, they're out on patrol, they're, they're on the road, they're busy.
But in the, I mean, they see somebody, we, or, or officer, all feels no doubt about it.
All the officers are capable of working traffic. We have one designated officer that does mainly what he works, but if he's out working traffic right now, an emergency call comes into the 911 center, and one officer responds to it, that officer, if he's close by, he's also gonna respond to it. And if it's a serious call, even if he's not close to it, he's gonna respond to it.
He, he's single-handedly listed, lifted a heavy load off our shoulders from perspective, being able to take these complaints, because I actually receive the complaints in my office, and it's multitude, whenever I get a complaint from a community where they have access to you, I can just pass it on to them, knowing that the justice may get, and be very, very conditioned out of it.
And, and let's be honest, as an elected official as the sheriff, it's always been a no-no for the sheriff's office to be writing, take these initial citations, but I, I feel really, I feel really committed to this because while I may lose a vote over it by somebody, I have the responsibility to keep it, to say. And if somebody does vote for me, or they're upset with me because somebody else is driving irrational, or driving drunk, or driving, you know, they got a ticket, probably their support, so we have the responsibility to, to take responsibility. It's, it's every, every single year out here, people complain about us writing tickets, but we have the responsibility. We use every tool available, the governor's highway safety program, right now, we have an opportunity to receive some of that money back. Our tax dollars, that goes to Washington, it goes to Congress, that's a fact, we utilize it.
I can mean, you're putting this into, into one of those.
Right. I appreciate you supporting our budget allowance, too.
I feel, I'm like, I'm like. Jamie, I think you're, I'm, I'm, well, I'm not telling you, I'm not telling you.
Hopefully, that must go that far.
Not much, you say, or I'm not. Every county is getting this grant, the legal aid can have been awarded, so this has been handled, we use.
Yes.
We have a handle for it, and a lot of counties got that money, and it will not handle correctly. And the service association, kind of the title of the county, is, they're very supportive of this, and it's a compliment to service department, really, Mr. Chairman, they'll leave it handled, including a lot of candidates applied for this grant, and not many get the grant, because that's the reason they're giving it, so.
This grant got really popular, and there's a lot of agencies, there's, you know, 400 different agencies in North Carolina, and they're scratching the floor, too, so I, I want that for very fortunate.
Big to match it, 19,000, 49,000. 19,000, 300,000.
Correct. That's our portion, and the, the state and the federal are gonna pay, what, $45,000, 99,000.
As chairman, I sort of got the head nod, if everybody did, but I think everybody supported, that motion. Um, I'm not sure about that. Pass. For motion, second, discussion, if you're done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And my signature, I think, the most, signature.
Jamie, let me ask you something. I still got a tune in for the chat, you know, right now, yeah, but, you know, the music, that's a tune that.
Sea, sea shark.
I'll eat it, it's gonna be a time.
Right.
Radar, radar.
Radar, radar.
We'll tune your answer with the later, if you want. That's good information, take it, or get it, or.
All right. Mike, I think you've got records retention schedule amendments, the S E, please. As the board may recall back in May of this year, the State's Attorney Archives handed us down a new set of records retention schedules, it's gonna ask us to, pretty much require us to develop. And basically, that does two things, it tells us how long we have to keep certain records, and it tells us under what conditions we can spud or destroy certain records. They have since sent us four amendments to that schedule. One affects the local elections, another county management, one register of deeds, and the other tax administration. The purpose of those are either patented, and we are agreed explanations of what those changes are, simply written in that we follow suit, and we consider we can state our records and call this case, we don't have a trouble.
Motion, first. For motion, second, discussion, if you're done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, who made this? Uh, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. We have the issue. I'll pay it to Mr. Bradshaw, if you have that gesture.
Actually, I think, I don't have that. Bear with me on a run, a lot of people, uh, this, you can weigh in on this as well. At the end of the last meeting, we had a discussion about exactly how much we need to pay Mr. Bradshaw based on what he requests, and at that time, the director and the board was not paying no more than 75 percent of his request, which was $3,266, I believe. Following that, Mr. Ford and Mr. Bradshaw had some continuing discussions about trying to get to some compromise on this. Bradshaw had actually done about $36,000, I believe, of additional work, and we were offering, I think, somewhere in the neighborhood of $23,000. I think Jack and Patrick kind of came to the conclusion that maybe $25,000 would be a fair amount for both sides. And I would actually consider that a saving, and perhaps we can put this issue to rest, and I think this is one of the last remaining items to actually flush out the Iowa Valley School. I have discussed this with the board, the county manager, if you were the favorite handling it, and if you didn't catch from what Mike said, the original bill coming from Mr. Bradshaw had been discounted already by Mr. Bradshaw to about $6,000. It is, this is a favor that we have contingency. No, actually, there, there were, there were, we're taking it under retaining from the. There was retaining from the construction. Kept by the county, and those ones. What was the, of what we offered? Basically, up to 75 percent of that $30,266, which came to about $23,000. $22,650. And it's all the companies. Motion to approve it, Chair.
For motion, and second, any discussion?
Certainly, we could draft a resolution, but once you, you can limit what you pay, it may seem like every job that happens, we go back and have approval, like our bad regenerators.
Yeah, I think, I think you could, you could do that, the problem with it is, is invariably, you run into situations in potential jobs that are not contemplated, and the original proposal was done, additional work required and whatnot, and most of the agreements that you can see from the design professional and engineer will say, I'm gonna do this work for X dollars, but if there's, if you ask me to do more work, you're gonna have to pay me for doing that work.
And that's, and that's where you see.
Did we ask for more?
I think in this particular situation, there was in fact a very high need for additional work and services.
And then when people present an itemized, he did. Change order.
He, he did in fact present an itemized statement, I don't know if it would actually be a, considered a change order, but certainly a request for optimization for additional services. I, I would say, I bear the view of this particular contract, and I, I can say to a very degree of confidence that the man opted in the Iowa School of Bus, with Bradshaw with this extra work.
Okay, that motion, second, any discussion? If you're done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Under due business, several items, I would, one thing that was asked was consideration of our. Yes. That we live in that, since you're here. You talking about the lease breach? Yeah. I think that.
And, Joe, I think.
The main end of that one?
What was, what was asked, on the agenda was, county's responsibility for office space for this Superior Court Judge, and our Superior Court Judge is here, and Bill Crowder, I recognize you, welcome you to meet tonight.
Thank you.
Do you want me to object to that, that is, this next sentence, I'm, anybody have a problem with that, and let's take care of that.
Let's go there.
Okay, Chester, you want to explain that?
Just very briefly, got a call on Friday indicating that we're gonna need to address providing office space, adequate office space for Judge Coward. Judge Coward has been officially sworn in, I understand.
That's true.
And is ready to work. He's having a hard time going to work because he doesn't have a place. The general statutes of state of North Carolina do require a county provide adequate office space for the resident Superior Court Judge, who is here in the county. Judge Coward contacted me last Friday, indicated she needed our help and assistance, so we should go get it and get this space lined up, as you probably. so we're gonna get it and get this space lined up, as you probably know, the county has for a number of years provided Judge Daniels' space at the DNC bank, I checked into that, and what I understood was.
Is he gonna take that over?
He's actually gonna take it over, just saying.
And his personal?
That is correct, yes. And.
What were we paying him?
A hundred and forty-four dollars.
It was a, it was a sweetheart idea, I remember that. About three hundred fifty square feet, I believe what Judge Coward's gonna have is a little bit more than that, and I think it's appropriate to have a little bit larger space than Judge has had. Nevertheless, he had contacted me Friday, indicated he located what he thought he was sitting in his place, and indicated he had some communication with Dave Jones who owns office space here on Main Street. This is actually in the back parking lot behind the Main Street shopping area, Chert Street area, but nevertheless, he asked me to get with Dave Jones and see if we could talk to him of some sort lease agreement. I have worked with Dave Jones on that, I have prepared and had some amendments to a proposal that he has provided, and he has approved those changes, and the document that I passed out is the resulting lease agreement proposal. Coward, I think, is, Judge Coward is interested in trying to get something lined up just as quickly as possible, except that it's one of the administrative office reports to come in and do whatever wiring and et cetera, and have to have him attach into the state system, and keep a lot of getting there as quickly as possible. This particular arrangement is one year with, I believe it had nine renewal, nine renewal, one-year renewal options, the lease payment is six hundred dollars per month, there is an inflator for renewal here, I, some funds.
We share the utility, we have utilities and share the waste and garbage disposal and all that, I think.
It's, it's a little bit, it's a sharing arrangement, I think basically what you have here is the, the electricity is separately metered, and the heat bills are less, water and sewer, that's right.
Do you see Judge Coward, do you see anything that needs to be done that way in there? Because it says the leasing is upon bringing renovations in progress.
I think it's true, yeah.
I've done, might be working on that, so.
Fortunately, it's, it's almost in new condition, I'm told, it was renovated for a tenant, it did not take the living.
That's exactly.
Just full disclosure, I would, I would look at it with our judge, and, and just to let you know, he looked at the space in my building next door, and we both agreed the space over there would probably be more appropriate for the next tenant, off roommate. So, I'd be fair with him, I think it's good space and it's good access, good space is what he needs, so I would be happy to, I think that makes sense.
These have had wind, this won't be lead.
We have motion, we have second, for motion second, we should take discussion.
Do you want to empty the amount? Here's probably about twelve thousand a year.
Exactly.
About twelve thousand a year is what you spend. For the lease, for the rent, the rent, garbage, everything goes along with you, that twelve thousand.
We have a lot of pictures, but we all take fifteen thousand for courts and facilities, things to air around.
You got enough to cover that.
We got enough for this year.
I was gonna point out that there is, there's money that's coming back, I'm saying on how much, that is designed to recompense the county a little bit.
And as Laura said, there's, there's nothing to care about in this, in this current budget, currently, you're revising that. You got discussion? If not, all papers say aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
I just take this opportunity to say thank you, and this was a so rushed job, and it became, it was just the circumstances of it, and I was gonna have, I was officially sworn in yesterday, but I'm gonna have another more public experiment on October twenty-five here at the courthouse, and I wanted to invite you all personally to come. Don't take my pictures until I fix my tie.
You don't want a tie, do you?
Thank you.
Put my hand.
Judge Collins, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Bill. Commissioner Bill?
Yes, gentlemen, this is a resolution, real quickly urging the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, the General Assembly and the government to delay and leave this in the advisory forums concerning the government, and a form of elected county officials as board members to the Smoky Mountain LME, MCO Board as Director. If you don't, the new law, what it states is there'll be a twenty-one member board to oversee the LME, even though I am on that twenty-one member board, we feel that all the counties in the west, and all twenty-three counties now make that, LME, Smoky Mountains, twenty-three counties, the Department of Health and Human Services just recognized the western region, and so now we go all the way to Allegheny County, Smokey doesn't Cherokee to Allegheny, but twenty-three counties, and what this resolution says is we, the clock starts ticking for thirty days once that merger is approved, that was approved last Thursday, and now that that's approved, we're just, we're asking the Department, most of the secretary, and I did have a meeting with Dave Richards, who's the Division Chief of the Department of Health and Human Services last Friday in Raleigh, about the resolution. As far as we know now, four of our counties have passed it to the west, we look for all counties to be passing this resolution, we do have a meeting next Wednesday, so I would ask you gentlemen that, what this says is that we need to have commissions on this board, we think it's done exactly backwards, we think the twenty-one member board should be the advisory board, what, instead, what they're doing, they're twenty-three member advisory commission board, with no authority, no oversight of the money that we have to give them by statute. In other words, there's one of the few things, maybe the other thing, I don't know, we give them money, they don't have no oversight of, of none of them, and.
Our board?
Yeah, that's another thing. But on the, this is, this is so important in our community that I think, and, and we met in Cherokee with the county managers and the chairman, and, and we represented our, with all seven counties in the far west, we all agreed, the wording of the resolution that has been passed, I think, by four counties so far, and I would ask you gentlemen to support this resolution. We don't know if we're doing any good, even the secretary, she said that she would certainly work to, to help us with this, and we try to figure out how we can have more governance. I mean, as we're the column, so that's what it comes back to, if it don't go well, it's gonna come back to the local level, just like you said, other things tonight, so we hope that she will delay this, asking, you know, and don't set in the resolution of last April of two thousand and fifteen, but by that time, let me throw this in your, there's a threshold of population where you don't have to come under this law, at one million five hundred pairs. We're at one million sixty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-four right now, including the twenty-three counties. We asked for a variance on that, so we felt we was in the, in the census, we thought, in the margin of error, we thought we could do that, their lawyers turned that down, so now we come back to this resolution, just asking very gently to have it postponed before this twenty-one member, you're gonna be asked to vote on a twenty-one member board that really knows very little about the mental health problems in our county, or in any county, and you're gonna have the twenty-three member county commission board for it, because I've not seen no county commissioner, and I've talked to most of them in twenty-three counties, that's gonna be a part of this advisory board who has no authority. We've got other things we need to do, and we want, you know, so you will have no governance, you'll have no say-so over the money spent, but the way that we've been working so far, we've got walk-in centers in both of our areas, it has improved, even though we are working on some things to get our involuntary commitments down, but, Mr. Sherman, what this is, is just a resolution that, that all the counties will be asking for the, for the secretary, Mr. Davis, I mean, he and I went over, Senator Davis has read the resolution, he's willing, and give you facts, Senator Davis and I met with Senator Dollar, or Reverend Dollar, who really sponsored this legislation twice before, and so Senator Davis certainly recognizes as former county commissioner that put the money, we have no governance, that's why we just can't hardly get, but none of the boards that we've talked to in our region, or in these twenty-three counties, can get hard to get over that, so that's what we're asking for, gentlemen, just to pass this resolution, we ask for an extension, because we're also being told that there's probably four more counties or five more counties going in there, in the smoke, which will put us over at million five, probably before April two thousand and fourteen, so why go through all this geration and upsetting all these folks, when you know you want to build the population base? So that's the only thing we're asking for here, and they're really, and the HHS of North Carolina is supporting on the resolution because they think it might help them also. If, if the other counties come in, and we have maps to show them the work wide, so we do that, Mr. Sherman, I make a motion and we pass this resolution, and we will forward it on with the other resolutions that's already been sent from our, our neighboring counties, in, in hopes that, that we don't have to, that this, we can delay this at least some point, and we can see what's gonna happen, but that's all we're asking for.
We have a motion, we have a second. For motion second in discussion. I did talk to Senator Davis, Reverend Davis, and I wrote together, so, for his name, he does not commit, all seven of his counties, great counties, are in that agreement, and he's pretty much the president, that's it. Any other discussion? All papers say aye. I oppose, that motion passes. Mr. Bell is here, and has a, I think, what will be the final change order on the college project, you got that for everybody? Fairly set, plant authority, if you want. Anything to take back?
Do you have any questions?
It's legit.
Yes, it's three, it's three parts to it. First part has to do with the heating system up there, when we put back in test to the antifreeze in the system, it did not reach the level which we would, the optimum, the highest, we want to get the B down to zero, if it gets down to zero inside the building, we'll get, I think, freeze, and the building, not even, it broke solid, it was quite expensive to fire, so that's part of it, and that change order, you see that. Another part is, we had to put in a second ground pad, transform the front yard, previously it had enclosure around it, we had to take that enclosure down, add that in, it was not in the original contract, and the folks in the house would like to have that, kind of get above the view, and so that's part of it, and then the other part is that we found I have the project is now coming down, is ending, that there's fiber off the corner of the main building over to the middle grade building, with six fibers in that cable, and four of them tested, and they were broken. Why they're broken, we don't know, there's no reason, they only happened so many, put in another cable there, and that's.
The work, work was done, Gloria, it's days, it's fairly easy.
It is, yes.
I know, last time I wasn't talking about the end, but here I am again, but we're down now to, we're out going back all the second time to the punch list, on Monday, and the project, and all, now is the bill, we have the plans, the classrooms, and they're ordered, they should be here, and then there's just, just minor little details that's covered in the contract, the general contract, you might have to come back and do some touch up here and there, and that probably is.
That's terrible, Mr. Office, saying I take an outstanding compliment about you, about your project, I mean, all personal, I meant it for that, exactly like that, for my mission.
For motion second, for the change order as presented, from the agency from that budget amount, the total amount being six thousand.
Six thousand.
Any other discussion?
It's just, if you're not bidding a solid project, I know, I'm not wishing to pay that, it looks great, it's appreciated, and in my conference, attorney, of all the projects he's managed, you know, if I thought it's all that's changed, and we paid not this attorney bill, I would, I would hate to thank you all for that.
All I can say to you is that, I know that this is probably, you had it for a while, but if you send this forward over a period of time, those folks in the house, we've taken care of the, of the elementary center in that building, the high school section in that building, the heat and air system over there is, is, it should be replaced, hopefully sometime, I'll talk to, we can take that to happen in the, in the future, but those folks in the house, we appreciate, watch me, tell me, from our department.
Thank you. You have a discussion? You have done all papers out?
I oppose.
Motion passes, thank you, Bill. The next item, county attorney, those can see.
Yes, board members, we recall that you approved a grant application for a project to remove exotic invasive from the greenway, and we got to looking at that paperwork in our ordinance to realize that part of that project couldn't legally be done because of our existing greenway ordinance, specifically, there's some provisions that prohibit the cutting or removal of vegetation, whether it's usually herbicide or pesticides, obviously those things are part of that project. Part of the reason for that, though, is that you have some conservation systems down in that general area that you have to comply with, and in this particular case, in order to comply with those requirements for this particular project, it had to be a question of the former management, press, trust, to get approval for this, and I think that had to be done, and this amendment simply allows for these types of projects to be done on written request and approved by the, by the county, and provided burden that they're done, systems requirements, and reactive conservation reasons. We'll bring to your attention, we did have one small type of graphic there, that I'll need to correct, references section twenty-eight point three oh three, that should be twenty-seven point three.
Oh, I, I got that, we know.
Okay. Being a liaison on this board here, I've seen the hard work that most of these folks put over with something on that greenway, and I went out with them, and we looked at some of the basements, and I let it drift out, it was relatively sunny, and it had been, and they got the grant, and they called on this.
In your business, my presentation, I recognize that Katie Coriol, who's here today, this evening, she's here on behalf of the Redson Greenway. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Y'all supported the right case?
Oh, yes.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Second, discussion. If you're done, all papers say aye.
I oppose.
That motion passes. David Key, here, welcome to the brief, Lieutenant Frankel.
I should have a couple of agreements, I believe, we need a agreement for the government to approve it, and.
It's a, it's an agreement between the county and the town that basically allows the county
to let them use the equipment, we have, we have some security laws, they have the technicians that are trained to use it, whereas the county, as a blade, does not have the personnel that are trained at the technician level to use it. They booked just about a month ago, and I said they're willing to train their people and use the equipment, our, our biggest concern was would they respond to anywhere in the county, and we've looked at that, that they will respond outside of Franklin district, and that agreement takes care of that, we looked at replacement of equipment that is being used, and how that is, and the county, and so forth, and I think that's.
Any reason I've been this, Chester?
Board members, I've worked with David Key on this, and you can hand, draw on you three. you three, uh, having a problem closing, you know, with-
Motion of, second, motion of the second, like, Christian, uh, Bill. Discussion.
This is, if a hazmat thing, if you don't know, you know, if a state thing, you don't know where it goes, up and down our road and I use example of falling up to islands, falling with these, you know, it's a little short distance, that thing will go off in the river. Uh, and, and, you know, this, it's been needed and I think it's a good, a good indication how we can work well with that.
Any other discussion? Are you done on papers? I, I oppose, that motion passes, thank you. David. Very good, David. Good.
Let me just say, we'll knock out, I'm going directly before I got this next one, David, please. Next item, Mike.
Okay.
Is that okay? Uh, this is to do with radio communication, please, please. Gentlemen, our last fire commission meeting, since July, Commissioner Bill, Commissioner Maven and I attended, um, I think they heard firsthand, some of our fire departments complained about inadequate communications, lack of receiving fire pages, lack of able to talk to dispatch, et cetera. And I think we've all known that there's been some issues in the Highlands and the Alana areas, uh, four years, so, uh, what we decided at that meeting we would do is investigate consulting companies, um, so they can come in and redo our communication system and maybe give us some ideas on how we improve it and say, we're doing the best we can, uh, just give us some ideas, all of the talk together and, uh, increase on from there. I passed off David. I know we wanted an unbiased company to come in with your assistance and, uh, you gave us a quick little description of your, kind of have what we've done since then. I did speak with, uh, Cage, Dave, he was chairman of the fire commission, he wasn't supported us. I'm sure Paul and probably speak to us as well, I don't know what it takes, so, that's his guys as well.
Um, just, just to be brief, back on the communication system we have now, um, it was designed over thirty years ago, um, back when the number of personnel that's used it is, is much less than it is. Um, it was designed as a system to work with mobile radios because at that point in time, portable radios were not real portable, they were, you know, very heavy to come to use. Um, so it worked, it served its purpose for its years it's been in service. Um, the current system we have now is working as hard as it can possibly work, but it's not yet done. And we, like, Mr. Tate said, we weren't a, a third party unbiased company to come in, not somebody who'd kind of sell us a product. Uh, there are, there are numerous companies right in this area that would be more than welcome to come in and to design us a product and sell us, you know, barrels and listen. That's not what we want. We want somebody to come in and tell us what we have is it working like it's supposed to be working and what we can do and it'd be up to us to find a company to, to make that work. So, um, we've reached out, Mr. Tate reached out and got some responses back. You see those lists on the face that I gave you, uh, federal engineer and, with him in Highlands, um, he had a very good presentation, um, and he is the, he is the lowest bid. Uh, we also met with Mission Critical Partners and his presentation, Mr. Austin, was more of a canned presentation. Um, his, his was the, uh, one that came in a nice pie during, uh, it, it was fairly apparent it was close up. I, I won't talk bad about the company because I don't know that much about them, but it was fairly evident upfront that, uh, this was a presentation that they have presented to everybody. They changed the name on the front page, changed the number on the back page, and he was more of a salesman than a regular person. Um, when, when we met with the Tate Communications, uh, I actually approached them over the phone and he said he would come do us a presentation, but once, once he got in and we got into the meeting, he admitted right up front, I'm not unbiased, I want to say you're the Tate Communication Partner. Um, I appreciated it and we, we all said thank you and then he gave us recommendations of what we should do. Um, and in my opinion, we could use those as just sounding boards to make sure that the, the other companies, when they come to us, we have something to compare. It would be my recommendation to this board to go forward with the, the lowest bid, have them come in, they will actually put people on the ground, go after firemen, first responders, annual staple, chief of department, ask where, where are your trouble parts, where are your troubled areas, um, and try to come up with a solution. Can you, do you need to add?
I've got a few more comments on that, I think, Colonel Sheriff, you'd like to speak to, and I'll speak to as well. Do you have any comments on Sheriff?
Um, as, as far as, uh, places that are difficult to, to get out, of course, in Allen and Islands is atrocious and, um, you know, just imagine being in a location where you have no communication bodies, uh, trying to call for help to dispatch and absolutely nothing. You're on your own and you're going to be forty to thirty minutes before they have to get to you and when you do, it's, it's a, it's a frequent occurrence. Um, I was just talking about with my lieutenant and we've been, we've been in our office there at the sheriff's office, just right behind this guy and it's not gotten out over the radio. Not only your in-car radios, but your indoor radios, uh, it's just, it's, it's a, don't be surprised that down the road you have somebody that gets seriously hurt and they have no radio communication. And I'm not just speaking because of law enforcement, I'm speaking for EMS, I'm speaking for the firemen, all of it. Um, it's, it's a serious situation.
We're waiting to start here, please.
It keeps being put off.
Mr. Viper Tower that has installed south of town, part of the solution, just as a reminder, uh, there is space available on that if it's helpful in the process.
We, we've looked at, um, unfortunately, and it's hard to, it's hard to imagine that that, uh, tower is in a mudslide, as tall as that tower is. Um, but if you look at it geographically, the top of that tower, um, is about the same level as I go prior to.
It is going to allow it to-
Yeah, and we look, we looked at putting some equipment on that and it really, really did.
And we're not, we're not talking about this happening every few days or every couple of weeks. We're talking about probably on a daily basis, uh, every day, because we've got officers in Allen and Islands and just about every day, I'm a few, I know you have a scanner now, so I know you've heard it on the scanner, uh, where dispatch keeps calling for that officer, keeps on calling for that officer to get disregarded and, uh, because that officer is able to finally get out.
Well, in response to Paul, and that's a great question, Paul, there for you, especially at the Peaceville, it was really, really a hot topic. It was, it was tough to say out, and, and we had, we had problems that night, had, uh, had problems tonight and the, of the problem out at, at the farm, with the problem with Knox, there was communication problem. We heard communication from the firemen, you know, uh, so it's just one of those things that, you know, I don't know, I know that Tom, the son and I, Tina, Tina Taylor, that what, these don't, they don't think they do, they don't work there. So, um, I mean, it's just time that we, uh, we live in that area, we live in the mountains.
We'll never, we'll never have a hundred percent coverage, come, we just can't have a hundred percent, but we're not up to-
We got a new tower laying that's not been put up right, Dave?
We have two, we have two towers on the ground right now.
And they've been laying for how long?
We've had, we bought them last year. Um, we're still waiting on the permits coming back from, yeah, we bought, that's more favorable.
You've got to put in the bill.
No.
Well, no, W F S C, they, they've got a brand new tower ready to put up in one side and give us all the status on that. We'll just put this other tower rainbowed free that we can have access to, don't have, that would probably hit the Alana Hill sun, we don't know. But it's the time to find out what we have and what we've hit, we just some officers and folks that, you know, it might really happen.
While you're thinking about the picture of somebody not being able to get out, and I know this is going a little bit off subject, but you'll discuss it next year, uh, we discussed a little bit this year about another dispatcher. Just imagine being that officer or that fireman or that paramedic that's calling for help, can't get it, and then that dispatcher who is getting extremely busy in there takes two extra, a couple more minutes because he's answering that second or third nine-one-one call. What's the possibility of forgetting about that officer, they have, they'll make contact with you. And so that's, that's not-
I had a, a little bit of extra inspiration dealing with this. I can say firsthand, I was in my street clothes in the middle of the Coliseum River, half of the country in Allen, uh, in a very, very intense situation. Couldn't get out, couldn't get the equipment that I needed and, um, I don't know if it would have made a difference, but, uh, gentleman died in war arms in the river. Couldn't make it out and I'm bringing a tear to my eye every time I drive by here. So, yeah, I, I definitely don't see this done. The only downside that I, I see this is that it's not in budget. I don't know if we're going to be good when we get around the budget, but, uh, in the meantime, I'd like to see it, and if you're going to see that, we don't have any reason to long the budget time, I'll be happy, but I need to have it.
What kind of timeframe does it need to say, we can approve it and go into a contract and, and we get everything, say how long it would take, act it out finally, come out over with.
We, we talked about, I think we talked, was it two months?
Yeah, it was, it was a short period of time, they would come in, they would, they would be, they would be in, in county for two, three, I think, and then there's a lot of this, the, a lot of the, uh, the math thing can be done, they don't, they don't have to be in county, but all the interviews with all the people and the site locations will test, they don't come back two weeks and that's-
So if we, if we took a good decision, I'd even think that tomorrow we could have something, that event, and that's, that's what's scary, I'm not very well situated. And then we, we don't have a choice, we're going to do it at some point. The solution is probably, if they're emerging, if we, if we can have the work.
Yeah, that's right. You, you got it.
And just to give you heads up, the, the solution is going to be very pricey.
What's the deal with it? Uh, antenna or the tower is laying somewhere?
We, we had, uh, purchased two towers, they're seventy-foot towers, they match the, the same ones on my thing, um, with the intent of renewing the tower, but all of our equipment is on a telephone pole on Kelly now, um, Kelly, Kelly ball, we got a box. Um, and it's worked for years, but it's deteriorating and, and we are in the process of getting permits from federal governments on federal land. You can't kick your thumb down the road and do without getting a permit and we, we talked to Ms. Doster and she's pushing it through, but I don't know what's it, we have the government shutdown again, I don't know where that application is, so, um, we, we, we can turn, we can turn space.
That you take with experience or if you desire, what you don't do is go for an dig a hole.
You don't do that.
Without permission. We went through that, did you?
The, the other-
That improves what we have here.
It, it will make what we have better. Uh, it won't be a huge improvement, but it will make what we have better.
And that's the thing, they have a permit, send it out. They, if us, if we work out a deal with them, they would sit right there and furnish the new generator, the new everything. And, uh, so, you know, that's another discussion we could handle.
Yeah, I think we need different options on it because I know, you know, we're going to come in here and we need, not necessarily the price of the cattle and crab, but we need different options on that we do. If that's how we improve, then why would we not, but these people can help.
The, the problem is it won't improve the system as a countywide system, it'll improve it in that area only because we'll be able to tune it. The problem with a telephone pole is it, it bends and plays with the wind and with, with temperature. Um, so, and you can tune it today to a hundred percent and tomorrow, you know, it's a little crooked and it's a little off, or it's a little-
Yeah, it's going to be higher.
We'll be a-
Thirty, forty foot higher.
We'll be as high as SCC allows today, which is seventy feet off the ground.
So that's going to give you a lot of range.
Or the top of the tower. Now each antenna has to have certain separation from each other so the frequencies don't-
They won't be on the top.
Right. We'll have one antenna on the top.
So that's going to give you a lot of range, that won't turn down.
No. Yeah, we'll just be able to tune it and maintain it better than what we have and we won't have to worry about it.
But it's higher, is that not-
It's not going to be much higher than the telephone pole. But we're, we're pretty high, that's pretty much that.
I got a question on this too.
And the second tower that's laying on the ground is, is here Mark Ford with maybe EMS base, which is our backup E O C, which if our main E O C goes down, everything switches to that building and we need to have it.
That'll carry ball also.
Oh, it's up with the, on one side.
You had, uh, made a statement, I've heard, uh, a couple of times on the way before, that we've proved this problem and off this survey, what, uh, we've proved this problem may sound flat, but if I've got a back of fire and have, I want to know if people have some, some kind of idea of, of what I do.
And in our discussions with the other consultants and, and the media folks, we are, and we have only discussed the fire side of it, we haven't discussed the sheriff's department side of it, which is what give a frequency. Um, it's the same equipment, but each frequency has its own equipment, so, um, if you upgrade the fire side of it, we're looking, depending on what we come back with, quarter of millions or half a million dollars.
Can each?
We can do either what, either one is, it, it was not mandated, but it's what's coming.
Sure.
I, I think that's one of the greatest work in engineering, I don't know quite, what we, that we do approve it and that's what we like about these two companies is they're giving us an unbiased decision and they'll help us most to improve the solution, they'll help improve our communication, they'll help us, part of the, this project wants us through the process to do something right.
Yes, they'll, they, once they make their recommendations and, and if we accept their recommendations, they will come up with an R F B that we can send out to them.
Well, that one certainly needs to be forward, we're only three minutes into our new budget here, four minutes.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, good thing I'll be, basically, we probably could have been, but you did.
We did address this back when you, it's been a long time, we, we, we did address this and we came back, it's been at least ten years ago, um, with some figures that at that particular time that the county started, and that was-
Well, at that time, our building was pretty much up to speed, but over a ten-year period, our equipment ain't to speak no more.
It's doing everything it can do.
And that prior to that?
We, we've got brand new equipment that we, we've replaced it on time and fashion and it's good equipment, it's doing all it can, but-
It's doing all it can.
It's doing all it can.
What more do you need?
Uh, just, just like Sheriff was saying, we, we have areas in the county that, for the most part, we're at, we're probably at eighty-five percent on mobile radio. Sounds like a big number, but if you're in that other fifteen percent and you can't get back, you don't read it.
There are going to be a certain percentage that we never reach.
We'll never reach a hundred percent.
Yeah, do you regret?
Do you regret to believe you can?
What, what amount of counties, what's the fair number to be at, ninety-nine percent?
Yeah, they're, they're expecting ninety-five percent with ninety-eight percent fishes.
Okay, well, that'd be forever worrying in our town.
Yeah, I don't think that-
We're going to be able, at the end of this, whatever, whatever we're going to get, we're going to be able to get communication anywhere in our town.
That's what we're shooting.
Ninety-five percent.
That's what we're shooting.
I mean, ninety-five percent, we're shooting. I know from everybody I've talked to, like you say, this, we've been told that getting used up to go on for a part of the frequency or something, the amount of handling of communication.
Oh, we, we can start changing channels, trying to get over.
It's just us. Especially if they're- I, I'm on a cell phone, I can't, I probably got twenty percent of damage.
Well, there's places in Alana where satellite radio doesn't, you know, and it's coming, so.
And that-
We're never going to get a hundred percent coverage.
There's new techno, microwave technology, there's all kinds of different technology out there. But for previous, someone's company going to direct us in that direction, so, probably most beneficial, depending on your expectations.
Well, you said this, these parts of that we did, it's pretty convincing, if it's our house on fire. I'd say it's like this, right, you know, I'd say in every county, Texas, Texas, Dallas, that I can, in the other place, but I do know, they do need a good communication system in our town, that, you know, you need it in all of this, you know, all of our emergency. They're not very, they're, you know, you're in all of this, you know, all of this emergency.
I'll make a motion. We approve federal engineering trial since 2007. They detect a problem, they'll represent.
Well, we've got, we've got a contingency in the budget, for, for that, for things like this. And I think just about that, sort of, if you're going to make some adjustments consistent, that we need to put in the next budget discussions. We need to know what to discuss.
Right, and this will give us what to try to put in the budget next year.
That was chosen as the, what the plan did, or the.
Yes.
How does that, does that kind of show?
We met with both companies.
A new problem dealing with the paper, now that we have our initial contact.
They were, I think, are you down there on?
Yeah, well, no, we didn't find federal online. I started quizzing people, it's the ACCC companies. Taking out names of whatever companies it was used.
But we met as a group, on that page, everyone in that group was at each meeting except for Jack, and he was, he was going to Highlands at that point.
You mentioned something about local companies, have you expaled on that a little bit?
There are some local companies, Western Carolina Communications at one. They would, they would love to come in here and design a system for us.
But we're talking about evaluation.
Right.
When the local companies can do a.
There's no way local in this area that will come in unbiased and say, "This is what you need, I'm not trying to sell you this, but this is what you need." All the, all the companies in the local area are, they're vendors, they're going to want to come in and say, "What the product I sell is what you need." And we really don't want them to. But he's not a local person.
Second, we have motion second, allocate money out of contingency, need to be debated, need discussion.
I would like to have the satellite carry out, and let sure Chester reviews, contract passes.
And again, thanks to GM Take.
Sorry, I'll support this one, but we do need to evaluate what we have, but any other further expenses is going to be in budget.
What's the amount of that?
Twenty-six thousand.
That's a reset. We have motion second, need discussion. Here you go, in all the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, thank you, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Thank you, David, you work on that.
That would entertain me, a short recess. Or at least pal.
This is your second agreement to execute County Highlands, it says County Court for every year, the amount is four hundred ninety-five thousand, which goes to County Highlands for providing recreational services. That amount for the purchase of a property, they employ this quarterly and it's every year.